There you go.
All right, thank you. Welcome. It's 7:00 PM on Tuesday, March 30th, and I will call to order this regular meeting of the Ferndale School Board. To begin this evening, will everyone please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the next item, 2.01, is the adoption of the agenda. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as written or to propose any changes. And I'm gonna either, I'm not sure if I'm offering more of a change or just a clarification, but excuse me just a second. Item 5.03 is a discussion on donations and community sponsorships. There is a document in process with the Bond Oversight Committee, but it's not ready for distribution yet. So I'll just give a brief update on that, but I just wanted to clarify that. And we can talk more about it, but we don't have the document to distribute tonight, so. With that, I'll still entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as written.
So I'm not aware of any changes, so I will just move to adopt the agenda as posted here on Board Ducks.
All right. Then move to adopt the agenda as written. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. During this time when we're conducting our meetings via video conferencing, we are accepting public comment through a portal on our district website or through email. And to the extent possible, we read those comments at our meetings that are the ones that are received prior to the board meeting. Comments that come through the chat feature tonight will be reviewed and answered after the meeting. As of this afternoon, we had not received any public comments to read. I want to remind you that Dr. Quinn continues to write answers to questions received from community members during the previous month, and those are posted under the public comments item on Board Ducks' agenda as well as on the website. All right, next item on the agenda is focus on students, 4.01. And this item is a constant for our, and it's a consistent feature rather, for our board meetings for at least the last year. And every month, there are new developments. Since the last, if not, well, actually every week, but since the last board meeting, a lot has happened. The majority of our district staff members have received both doses of the COVID vaccine. The governor has issued a proclamation related to school openings. The CDC has come out with new information about physical distancing between students. The governor has made another announcement about translating the CDC's information into guidance for the schools. And the state has published new rules for graduation ceremonies. And that's all since the last board meeting. When it comes to reopening schools, this past year has taught us that the landscape is forever changing as the scientists and researchers learn more and pass it on. So at this time, I'm going to turn the floor over to Dr. Quinn and her team to bring us up to speed on what all these developments mean for Ferndale.
Thank you, Andrew. My, thank you, Andrew. I want to just start by once again saying how grateful we are to the Lummi Nation for the provision of vaccines. Between, I don't know, about 300 of our staff received their second vaccines on March 20th. And as you know, we, we had a remote learning day on March 22nd to accommodate for any side effects. The, the big news, you mentioned a lot of big news, but probably the biggest news is the announcement that was made by the CDC on March 18th about changing the physical distance requirement in some places in our schools from six feet to three feet, and then was reinforced by the governor on March 25th when he, when he made that CDC guidance part of the, the rules for K-12 schools. That has generated a lot of questions about when that means we can double the number of kids in school and get more in-person learning going, and from us as well as from our community. But the guidance really isn't as simple as just doubling the number of students. There are a lot of nuances and other requirements in the, in that guidance and which we are currently in the processing. And I'm going to ask John to say a few words about the layers of rules involved in the new guidance.
Thanks, Linda. Yeah, so the CDC, what, about two weeks ago, brought out some new guidance, which sparked a lot of interest. The way it works is the CDC does the research, and then our Department of Health, which is a state department, is the, because we're a state agency, is the one that gives us our, our guidelines and what we have to do. And then we have a local Wacom County Health Department, which helps us to interpret and implement those things. So the CDC, because it's national, got a lot of, of review. And to the, for the most part, the, the Department of Health adopted those. And what in the little short news article, what you would have heard is you can be three feet. But like Linda said, it's, it's quite a bit more complicated than that. The, some of the exceptions to it include that adults still need to all be six feet apart. Staff need to stay six feet apart from students, and that has to do with adults still being our most active transmitters of, of, of the virus. We also know that in any kind of common area like auditorium or gyms or any other places that we need to remain six feet apart during times that masks can't be worn, such as eating, which is a complication. We, right now, we're eating lunch in an elementary classroom, which we can do at six feet apart, but we can't do it three feet apart. Anything that, that is, involves heavy exhalation, like singing or athletics, still require six feet apart. Band does. Also, if we get in a spot where we have high transmission in our community, that requires six feet at the middle and high schools. Again, the older, older you are, the more likely you are a transmitter. So there's different rules for the middle and high school than we have at the, at the elementary school. They define high transmission as over 100. But that's for the seven-day window, not a 14-day window. Most of the numbers we see on the news have to do with a 14-day window. You can just double it. It's not necessarily as it rise, if it's, if it's staying flat, that's an accurate way to do it, but during times when it's going up or going down, that isn't an accurate way to judge that. One of the other complications and one that I think is going to be a little difficult for, for families is even though that the kids can be three feet apart in a classroom, if we have a positive case, we are required to contact based quarantine for 14 days to six feet. If you think about that, if we have kids sitting three feet apart and you have a student at the center of a classroom, there's actually eight people that would be seated less than six feet apart, and so there would be eight quarantine in that class, if you think about that in our middle school. And let's say that none of those students are the same kids as they travel from class to class, which probably isn't true, but just illustrate the point. That would be six classes, eight contacts, you could be looking at 48 14-day quarantines for one case. Tell you, I've made some of those calls myself. The nurses do most of them, and, and nobody's happy about it. It's very disruptive to a family, and it's disruptive to the learning. So those are some of the complications that we're in the process of trying to work out. The other, other change that's kind of come along, and it's something we're talking about now, is what happens when somebody is vaccinated and they are close contact. It's, and we actually, aren't I lucky? I got to do my first one today where we had a vaccinated person who was a close contact to a, a positive case. Because the person was asymptomatic, they don't need to quarantine. If that person would have been symptomatic, they still would have been, been quarantined because there are still enough unknowns about the disease. So those are the changes that were trying, trying to work into our, our new, our new actions. Continue to work kind of day by day on that.
Thanks, Drew. Do you have a que, oh, sorry, Andrew, did you have a question?
No, I'll wait and let you go ahead with your.
I was, I was just going to say that, that, that sounds like a lot of complications. It doesn't mean that we're not trying to enact this new guidance. We just want to make the point that it is not a simple process. We're, we're, you know, it's going to take us a while to work this out. I'm just going to call Kelly, on Kelly for a moment, to briefly share the, your elementary leadership teams' conversations about expanding in-person learning.
Sure. Thanks, John, for explaining that. It helps as we talk a little bit with, about the elementary process thus far. What I would say is last Wednesday, we started engaging in conversations at the elementary level. These are very initial conversations, but trying to involve our, our entire elementary staff to the greatest extent possible. So last Wednesday, we met with our elementary leadership team, and we completed an activity where we asked that team to identify what things we really need to be thinking about as we prepare to, to transition to full-time in-person learning. And I will say, that team is just so helpful in setting a direction, giving us feedback. And so we completed an activity, we came up with quite a few items, but the recommendation of that team was that we needed to take this back to our grade-level teams as well. And so fortunately, Wednesday is also our day that we have grade-level meetings, and each one of our principals facilitates a grade-level meeting. So we did that same activity on Wednesday at each grade level, just talking about what are some of those things that we need to work towards or resolve or be creative in developing solutions. And if so many of the things were logistics and so many of the things, as soon as we identified as a potential, you know, challenge, there were, there were several solutions that were provided as well. An example of one of those, John already mentioned, lunch at the elementary level. But there's a number of other things that we're working towards. And I would just say that we've continued those meetings, and we will continue those meetings. We're meeting with representative groups of specialists at the elementary level. PE, music, counseling, nursing, at this point, we've met with. Nursing's K-12, but we're continuing to also meet with other groups as well. Like tomorrow morning, we have a meeting with our ELL specialists, some representative group of special education teachers as well as our LAP teachers, because currently we're providing services on asynchronous days for several of our programs. So as we're potentially transitioning to full-time in-person, we're going to be using a different model. So trying to get as many of these things taken care of, addressed, as much feedback as we can, moving forward in whatever capacity or way that is. So a lot of amazing work. Our staff has been very helpful, very creative, and have, they've given us great feedback. And so we've taken all that feedback, tried to kind of organize it, and then say, okay, what can we work to address right now? So we've appreciated their support, and we'll continue to, to whatever we can to resolve these items.
Faye, you wanted to say a few things about the secondary?
Yeah, we had really similar things. We had really similar conversations at the secondary leadership team, as Kelly did with her elementary leadership teams, just thinking about, you know, we, we know it's coming, that we're going to be able to move into full-time in-person learning. So we kind of posed that, like, as, as we know it's coming, what are some of the things that we need to consider as we start upon that journey? I'm really similar to Kelly's experience at elementary, talking about little logistics of particularly at middle and high about lunches. That's a common one, K-12. But also with the transition between classes at the middle and high school, they're cleaning desks and chairs between students coming in and out for each period. So now, you know, increasing the amount of students in there, what are, you know, what are some of the cleaning protocols? Will they remain the same? How do we manage that? So really logistical things. How do we manage passing periods? Right now, we've been able to keep kind of, the middle school's kind of on a staggered release. So how do you manage that when you double the number of students in the buildings? So thinking of creative ways for passing. How we enter the building in the mornings? If you think about the high school and the middle schools pre-pandemic, it was, everybody just kind of hung out in one particular space. Well, that, you know, doesn't allow us to keep six feet of distance in those common areas. So what do we do when students arrive in the morning? How do we manage those? So a lot of kind of navigating the logistics of how. And then contact tracing, like, like John explained, at the middle school, that could potentially be 48 students, because students have six periods in a day. At a high school, you know, you're probably going to be a little less than that because they have four periods a day, but it's still a substantial amount of students from classrooms. So that, those are some of the big, the big questions is the how. And then our secondary leadership team, our principals will take that back to their building leadership teams and kind of work out from there within their buildings, because each of the buildings is, is built slightly differently, has completely different layouts, have different logistical challenges and advantages in different buildings. So kind of taking that back to the buildings and figuring out some of those challenges. One of the other things I want to share with you is you probably heard about the governor's proclamation or mandate of at least 30% of time should be students in the buildings if they choose to participate in the hybrid model. We were working on that last week, and we're actually at 40%, sitting right around just a little, elementary, we're at 42%, and the middle and high school, we're at 40% of the week is, has our students in person if they choose. So that was, that was heartening. And then the other question that's coming up a lot is about graduation. And what will graduation look like this year for our seniors? So Jeremy, our founder, high school principal, he is working on surveying students and families to kind of get a sense of what people are thinking out there with the, you, the guidance of we still have to main social, maintain social distancing, we still have to maintain masks. But what, what might graduation look like? We should start to put that together in the next couple of weeks here.
Thank you. John, do you want to say a couple words about our surveillance testing new program?
Sure, sure. From the beginning, we said we would do what it took to keep people safe, and, and testing is kind of the next layer of mitigation that we can provide. So we have entered into an agreement with Children's Hospital, who got a grant for asymptomatic surveillance testing. So these are people that aren't sick, and, but you're getting a, a look into, find out if they're healthy. And the advantage here is you, the research is showing that you get a 50% reduction in asymptomatic transmission if you have a plan like this. And, because we've heard a lot about that, a lot of times, a person doesn't know that they're ill, either because they're not symptomatic at all, or it's so slight that they don't really notice that they have a difference going on. And so this was, it was, like I said, a grant through Children's Hospital, so it's free other than some staff resources that we're, we're putting into it. We will be starting the Monday right after spring vacation. We're going to be doing volunteers, student volunteers from Vista Horizon and, and the high school. Older kids can self-swab. They're doing kind of the outside of the nose. If you've been tested recently, instead of at the very beginning where they were tickling the brain, it's now not the, the deep dive into the nose, it's the, it's kind of the opening of the nose. Kids will be, or students will be tested one time per week. And just today, actually, kind of something kind of exciting, we, Children's has agreed to allow us to some other applications for, for the testing, which is exciting because some of the students that haven't been willing to go to maybe Linden and get tested or that have been afraid to go other places, we're going to have a Q test, which is an antigen test that we can also give. And so if we have somebody that's symptomatic, we may be able to get those students back at school sooner. And so it's kind of a side benefit, and one I frankly didn't think they were going to allow because it's not in the purview of their grant, but there's, there's more that we're going to be able to do than we even, we even knew. So looking to start that right after the break.
Well, that's probably more than you wanted to know. I will.
I can talk more about swabbing if you'd like.
No, thanks. I did meet with, I've, I've met a lot lately with the other superintendents in the county, but we had another meeting this morning with Dr. Stern and two of his key people from the Wacom Health Department. Get an update on what the other schools are doing. I will say that all of us in the county are intending to expand our in-person learning as soon as possible. So I don't want this to sound like we're coming up with reasons not to do it. We were checking out our planning with Dr. Stern this morning. We've been throwing around dates, but we haven't thrown them to everyone yet, so I don't want to make any announcements here, but it's, it's just not, it's going to take a few weeks to get all of this figured out. So now, I would love to entertain your questions or.
I have a question.
Sure.
You had said that the over 100 for a seven-day period is a high transition, and I was hoping that you could answer, what is our current number for that seven-day? And has there been a time in the past when we have been over that 100? So people kind of get a feel like, how bad does it have to be before middle school and high school would be affected?
Yeah, I didn't check today on the, for the current seven-day rate. I report the 14-day rate, the one that I send to you daily. But last I saw, it was right around 50. And compare that to the 120-something that I reported to you in the, in the daily report. And answer the other question is, yeah. When we saw that rise post-Thanksgiving, that then shot up after, after Christmas, we, we spent quite a bit of time actually, and where the seven-day rate would have been much higher than, than that. And that would have, based on the CDC guidance and the Department of Health, would have put us in a six-foot situation at our middle and high school.
Other questions?
More comment than question, because I think, I don't think there's a lot of answers yet, but the complexity of this is just mind-boggling, and I appreciate you talking about the, the six-foot to three-foot difference, and what difference it makes and what it doesn't make. Because I think there are a lot of people that think, okay, if we can get to three feet, we can all be back in school. And that's clearly not straightforward at all. So I appreciate the time you guys took to kind of walk us through those things. And while I, if there's this part of my mind that says, this is impossible, I also thought what you're doing now was impossible, and we figured it out as a community. And so I'm going to assume that you guys are going to figure it out going forward too, so thank you.
We will. We will. It's, we will. We're getting good at pivoting.
Yeah, it's, it's remarkable what, what's been accomplished, I think, just since February 1st. So I know I speak for the board in saying thank you for the hard work that you and your team have done and, and the successes that we've had, the daily updates that are so thorough. We greatly appreciate that information. And I think I also speak on behalf of the board to say, you know, we're all anxious to get our kids back into school to the greatest extent possible without compromising their health and safety and without compromising the health and safety of our staff. So I know you've got both groups, you know, in, in forethought of everything that you do, so thank you for that. So the next item on our agenda.
I have a couple more questions. Real quick, I swear they're quick.
Wow, you gotta be quicker then.
For the quarantine students, if, God forbid, we have those 48 students, would they just go to remote learning, like they have been doing?
Well, that's, that's a little more complicated than that because the hybrid option goes away with, if you're back to five days, there's no big advantage there. Those will still be the remote-only classes, but that's actually one of the questions that we are right now trying to, to solve. How do we continue that?
I appreciate you looking at that. It's like one of those complexities that LeAnn was saying, it seems impossible. But if you were to have 48 students impacted by one or 40, we can't. And what if there are three cases, and now you're up to over 100 students type of thing?
Yeah, don't say that.
I mean, I didn't. I don't know. That was LeAnn. LeAnn said something. And then for the, the asymptomatic testing with the University of Washington, because this is a study, do they say that we need a certain amount of students to participate in that? Or have they given any guidance on that?
It's Children's Hospital, and there, no, there isn't a minimum participation. In fact, I suspect that we will start small and grow through the, the project, which, you know, honestly, isn't the, the worst as you're learning how to do something, as long as we then get enough people to see the, see the benefit of the decrease in transmission.
And my last question is, the symptomatic students that might be eligible then for testing, that would only be with parent permission, correct?
Any of the testing requires permission. All of it.
Any other questions? All right, we're moving on. So the next item on our agenda is 4.02, and it's a report prepared by Dr. Quinn on the implementation of since time immemorial tribal sovereignty curriculum that we use in our district. This report represents a subset of the monitoring report for results policy 2.5 academic achievement in social studies. And this comes up again on our bi-annual plan in October of 2021. However, Dr. Quinn prepared this report out of sequence in response to a request made at our joint meeting with the Lummi Education Board in December of 2020. So at this time, I'm going to turn the floor over to Dr. Quinn.
Thanks, and I will, I just want to say that I know you have only had that report for a day and a half, and it's 23 pages. So I'm not sure, it would be logical to me that you might not be prepared to discuss it today. And if so, we can do that at the next meeting or in some other format. I, if you've had a chance to look through it, the report is divided into several sections. The introduction provides some history about the since time immemorial curriculum, when it was first, first made, mandated by the state. The second section is the segment of our last report on, on policy R2.4, or 2.5, that talks about since time immemorial, which, this, this particular curriculum was part of that report. The third section is really a survey that was conducted just of our different principals who then asked their staff what, what's going on now. The fourth section is a summary of district-wide teaching and learning about tribal history, culture, and government, and then just my concluding remarks and a number of appendices. and then just my concluding remarks and a number of appendices. I I said in the introduction to the report, it is not about all of our native programs. It is about our teaching about native culture. So it doesn't include information about our native advisors or ways that we support our native students. It's about our educational program about Native American history, culture and government. So with that said, I would be happy to entertain comments or questions or we can put this on the some other agenda or in some other format.
So, board?
I didn't get, I'm sorry. I didn't get a chance to read the report. I was really surprised and happy surprise with all of work that is being done and burned out. I like your last comment you wrote about doing a policy, a one page policy of some kind at the end of your report. I want to be able to help with that if I could. And then also, I I think I wrote to you, and I said, you know, this report goes to show you with this mandate, because it is a mandate, we have to think about the future, of course, and maybe bring along, like I said, by the Office of Indian Education as before, and have that maybe part of this is their priority to track the STI along with the Impact Aid, along with the other Indian education programs, and, you know, do this and take it one step further. So the superintendent, you know, is not responsible for having to, you know, report to the Lumi Education or the Lumi Council or whoever. I see there. I see there's a great need there.
I guess my reply to that would be that the superintendent will be responsible for doing this report as long as you are a policy governance board because the report is part of one of the policy reports. I know I realize the teaching of STI is mandated by an RCW, but so is most of what we do. So of course, that's a possibility, but I'm not. I'm not sure out of all of the range of things that whether a separate person to manage the STI report would be necessarily my top priority, given our.
Well, I know you were saying that you had that this was on top of all your business that you have to do. So.
But Jesse, it would have come up. No, I know it would have come up in October and it's fine to do it now because we missed it some time. But we've got of all of our our curriculum reports on a cycle so that we don't miss any of them. And this this is just sort of advanced work for the October report.
Okay. And also, thinking about the resources for STI, I can imagine that's got to be a big responsibility for somebody, you know, to ensure that all the resources are taken care of from the tribe. So it does get the curriculum and it is based on, you know, grade level or whatever. So I don't know. I'm just thinking outside the box and maybe I guess is the place to talk about it. You know, developing an office for that also, I guess, is where we see it.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't mean to stun everybody.
No, 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 I just I was waiting to see if my else had a comment. And I would assume that that need would be a joint decision from superintendent as well as from interactions with folks from the Lumi Nation.
Oh, yeah, I'm just bringing it up because, you know.
I'm not sure it would be a decision. I was just thinking that it it might not be a board decision to establish that. I'm not sure.
If it does, the budget.
Yeah.
I would imagine it would fall under the budget. Pardon me?
Oh, I think Leanne, I thought her hand up or.
Thanks, Melinda. So it's complicated, right? And it does involve budget and it does involve our priorities. And and I think it's like looking at what are what are the programs we're doing? This report is is amazingly full and helpful. But what are the what are all the programs we're doing? The funding and and our priorities? And and maybe that's a way to go, Jesse, and maybe it's not. But I think I think we have to look at that whole picture and and wrestle with it a little bit. I'm thinking about this report and the timing of our meeting with the Lumi School Board, with the Lumi Board of Education. And it feels like we should work at coordinating that timing, maybe shift our own calendar. So and I know that meeting is not completely predictable, but it's sort of within a range of months. We know we're going to have it. And maybe that this report then gets updated in time for that meeting. So we can share it and we can show the good work that that is going on.
I think because it's a mandate to Leanne that the Lumi Education Board, of course, are aware of this. And then now I am on the government to government task force. I'm sorry, with the WASDA. The number of districts that were are involved in there have an office for Indian education and and then tracking STI. Not only that, but, you know, children's attendance and that type of stuff and grades and all that until they graduate. Looking at all the barriers, that's what we did. Well, I used to work in the Indian Education Office for Ferndale, and that was one of our responsibilities. I don't know how it's done today. And if it's done today, I don't know. But I know with STI being a mandate, that seems like what do you call it? I don't know. But it seems like that's a priority too of WASDA that keeps being brought up, not only with WASDA, but the Lumi Education Commission. And they're very well aware of it. And they are closely tied to the council. So that's where the questions came from. And I'm just I'm just the messenger.
I'm really glad you're on that government to government committee, Jesse. Thank you for serving on that. That's important.
Thank you.
One of the reasons that we did put the social studies report in October is that we generally meet with the have the joint meeting in December. And so that's I was trying to think like you are, Leanne, that it would be fresh report when we do that. Also, Jesse, we do have Native American staff who do the things that you're talking about. Rather than one person, like when you worked here, we have distributed staff now. And we have. That's what Logan Toby and Mia Cummings do. And I think, given the the option, I know that I talked to one of our elementary to to Mishia, who who's the principal at Eagle Ridge. He would prefer rather than one person that's at the district level, he would prefer that we add another support person at the elementary level that does the kind of work you're talking about, tracking attendance and grades and serving as a liaison with families.
Yeah, I understand that Logan and Mia have their jobs and I'm sure that they track. I'm only guessing. I haven't talked to them. My guess is that they track the students' attendance. I'm just thinking of a, you know, out of the box and thinking that having some office centrally located where people and parents and council and Education Commission or whoever can tap into, especially for the resources. And I'm only bringing this up because I I'm not even sure, but I'm guessing this is a place to bring it is in the school board meeting. So that's why I'm putting it on, you know, notice. And that I'll continue to do so until we figure something out.
Great.
I absolutely agree that that advocacy is important. And I think we've had through through you and through Candace, Jesse, we've had great advocacy for Lumi children. I think we also need to remember we have other groups of children too. You know, Latino, Latina. We have other populations that also need some representation. And I don't know as far as budget wise, and we'll get into budget. How much money do we have for these? And do we need? Do we need people that are dedicated for every group? Can we have one dedicated for? I don't know. But I just, I want to remember all of our kids as well.
Me too, as well. I'm always speaking for Lumi because guess what? I'm Lumi and I'm a Lumi member and that's who I speak for. I'm not Latino.
But you know, if you look at the rest of our school board, if that's if it's you have to be that person or you have to be that ethnicity to speak for that group, who is speaking for our Hispanic children? Who is speaking for our Southeast Asian children? Who is speaking for our AAPI children? I am so grateful you are on our school board. And I am not the best voice for all of you.
I agree with you. I don't have the time speaking on behalf of Lumi because that's why I was elected for this position is to, you know, not shut my mouth. I'm done with that.
Well, I think we also have a special connection with our Lumi partners and neighbors. And so I think that there is there's a different mandate for us in this area. But I think we all are focused and want to be focused on all of our kids. But I think in in this regard, there's there are there's a special mandate and and I think a special relationship within our community that really causes us to have this this focus on the success of our Lumi children, success of our Ferndale children, success of all our children.
I'm with you, Andrew, and thinking about the future. Just think what we could do with the Office of Education for Native American and Hispanic and whoever else. I mean, I mean, that would make Ferndale School much stronger. And I'll tell you the truth. You would get more enrollment from Lumi if they had more advocacy and then certain place to go to. When when I was in this office, I was a secretary at first. I left the job, I went to school, came back and I was director. And I tracked, we tracked their grades, of course, and their attendance and their family, you know, what was going on, whatever. And I think we made a big difference, especially kids that we were having a hard time reaching and kids that were dropping out, you know, for whatever reason. And then we did a lot of advocacy and parents came in. We had meetings all the time and that made it really strong. Ferndale was strong. We graduated 18 people that year. And then usually in the past was like two, three, if you're lucky. That year we worked, you know, hard. We graduated 18. And it was put in the newspaper, was in the Bellingham Herald because of all the work we did. I believe that if we had another office of some kind centrally located, we could do that again. You know, I believe enrollment would increase. Your numbers would increase. That's good. We love it. That's always good.
You're breaking. Sorry.
Well, and I know we have a study session coming up, not the next one, but the one after that. That's the focus is equity and inclusion, I believe. And I'm thinking part of this could be carried on. This conversation could be expanded on and carried on there too, Jesse.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
So, Doc Quinn, we will meet with Lumi Nation School Board in December still. Is that correct?
Well, we've sometimes we've met twice a year, but we've almost always met in December because or try to because the Impact Aid application is due at the end of January. And so sometimes we've also met in the spring.
I'm just trying to think of when we should circle back to this to because I I didn't review it as fully as I would like to. And so I don't know if we want to have further discussion at the next meeting or table this until a little bit closer to our meeting time with the Lumi School Board.
You can. You can let me know that anytime in the next three weeks.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyone else have a thought on that?
I I would agree with delaying it for discussion. I I didn't get a chance between last night when it came and today to read it.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. This report is posted on Board Docs. Kelly Warner will, oh, wait, I'm on the wrong spot. Never mind. I'm I'm a little distracted. I want to tell you, my computer is telling me that I'm going to have a reboot that's mandatory in five minutes. And I have no choice. It's from Seitel. So in a few minutes, I'm going to disappear and have to find another way to join you. So.
That would be you, right? I'll take my computer in with Andrew. I have my Mac Kelly, so I can type mine and.
Kelly or Fay will.
Just wanted to warn you, I've been trying to have it disappear, but it's telling me I have no choice. So.
Andrew, what have you done to anger the computer gods? It seems like.
I'm sitting in a conference room at the school district office, and I think my computer is saying we're home. And it's just doing everything it hasn't done for a long time. So it's pretty crazy. So, well, thank you for that update, Linda, and I appreciate that. And we will table this, but we'll circle back before we get to the point of meeting with Lumi Nation. And thank you, Jesse and Melissa, I mean, Melinda, for your comments. And we will keep those in the forefront as, you know, we're heading into a period where there are going to be some changes and we'll just have to remind ourselves of all these many things that we have going on. So, thank you. All right. So the next item, I've got three minutes and 24 seconds. The next item on our agenda, 4.03, is receiving the president, the superintendent's monitoring port for results policy 2.4 academic achievement in technology. And this is on our work plan for this month. I want to remind everyone that the board has approximately 25 governance policies that we monitor on a biannual basis. About half of the policies focus on operations that we operational expectations, rather, for the way the district is run by Dr. Quinn and her team. The other half focus on the results that the board expects the district to achieve with the students. At each of our business meetings, we receive a new policy report from Dr. Quinn, which is which we then have a month to review before discussing at our next meeting. So this policy that we're receiving tonight, we will review at our April meeting. This month, we're receiving the report on, as we said, results policy 2.4. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Quinn to introduce the report.
Well, I don't have very much to say before you've read the report, except. Except that this was an interesting one to write because. The last time you this report was up for review was May of two thousand nineteen. And our world of technology. I think my first line in the introduction says it was twenty two months that might as well have been two decades. As far as so much of what we envisioned we would be doing with technology. In uh May of two thousand nineteen. Is not what we necessarily have been doing for the past year. Um that's not to say we haven't. I mean, we've been forced to go at a faster pace, so um I will be interested in your. Your reactions to the report and um I look forward to discussing it with you next month.
Okay. Thank you. As I said, this report is posted on Board Docs. Uh Kelly Warner will deliver a hard copy to the board members when she comes to your homes to get signatures. Uh we realized that our preference is being able to read these reports in that format. And it makes us it makes us it easier for us to take notes while we're doing so. All right. Was someone gonna bring a different computer in to the conference room?
Faye is.
Faye is okay. I'm I'm here it is.
Warner has it.
Okay.
Great. I'm about to go down here. I'll go ahead and start.
And I would just say to my team, my thing keeps my computer keeps saying my internet is unstable, so. Be ready to finish my sentence if I disappear. You're good at that, so. Okay, you're good, Andrew.
All right.
You're just in a new Hollywood square for me. Or you're two in two of them.
Yes, I know. I I apologize.
Okay, you're gonna have.
There it goes. All right, it's off. It's doing its thing now. All right, so focus on district operations is the next item. The quarterly report from the Bond Oversight Committee. So this is a quarterly report from the Bond Oversight Committee, which is an independent seven-member. Group that was officially commissioned by the school board in May of two thousand nineteen. Official to um review and receive information from the district about bond projects. Uh they ask questions, make suggestions to the board or its destiny and inform the public. Concerning the expenditures of the bond dollars. In addition to those seven members, um there are also attendees from. Cornerstone Construction, Dykman, our architects. District Office, Mark DeBock is there. I attend. As do two representatives from CSG. So it's a large group. Um and they review all aspects of the uh. Use of bond dollars and the course of action being taken by the various entities. As we move towards actually breaking ground on the new school. Uh the primary way that the Bond Oversight Committee communicates it work its work to the board. Is in public is by preparing quarterly reports. And these are posted both on the district website and presented to the school board. The Oversight Committee's last report was presented to us in October of twenty twenty. The most current report is now posted on Board Docs. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to one of the committee's co-chairs, Anya, Anya Milton, to present the report. Anya?
Thanks, Andrew. I appreciate the time, folks. This will not be a juicy report overview. Usually you see Riley Cornellson, but he welcomed. His third son earlier this month, so he is on paternity leave, so he asked me to deliver the report to you. We update you on key function updates and I have six key function updates I'd like to share with you. Um the first is communication with stakeholders. We update, um we see the updated dashboards have been um put on the web and we're very pleased about how that looks. We have also suggested and recommend improving and developing additional dashboard functions. To communicate further details with the public in a clear and direct way. Um some of those ideas include um cash flow projection models, detailed schedules, visual phasing. Um traffic flow plans as well as schematic renderings. So we thought that those might be helpful for the public to understand. And to track the progress and celebrate alongside um the district as we reach those milestones. We uh we also wanted to say that, you know, over those last four months that this report covers. We really received very little engagement with the public. There's very few questions that come in. And um we really are interested in learning. And developing new ways to engage with the public. Um we usually have very few people that follow us in our meetings. And if they show up, they're usually a district employee. So thanks for the interest, but we would love to hear more from our community. The second key function to cover tonight is the review of contracts. So the BOC, as we refer to ourselves. Um reviewed the following contracts and purchase orders, um POs for the PAC revisions and bid alternates. And the Bond Oversight Committee members were concerned with the value relative to the scope of this project and we related that to um the larger scope of our committee. Special inspection services for the FHS project, the PAC structural evaluation, custer and central roofing. Um and the grandstands. So we also review um the budget shifts and the adjustments month to month and have been pleased with where we're at. The third key function is construction plans and design review. Um during this time period, eighty five percent construction drawings were released in um November seventeenth. For the Bond Oversight Committee to review. The updated drawing package of um. Package of drawings was again far more comprehensive. Than the previous DD version and provided additional details and interface of systems. To review and understand and the BOC continues to recommend that the district try to focus more on getting. A best value out of our bond dollars. I mean, that's kind of the drum we beat the whole time. In saying that this is what we need to be um keeping mindful of, and I think you guys all know that already. A constructibility review um was part of the latest package and the BOC, while not involved in the process, did review the plans in the final major report. Um major items of note include groundwater, de-watering and phasing considerations. We talked excessively about that, building egress plans and detailing in conjunction with phased operations. Structural consistency and design overlap and MEP coordination. Again, this is the key thing here. The the BOC recommends the district and we continue to emphasis best value throughout the throughout industry. Excuse me, throughout the duration of this project and continue to look for ways to stay within budget to provide student staff in the community. The most efficient and economical product possible. The fourth key function is construction funding and review. Cornerstone Construction had drafted a cash flow plan and is modeled with large input from the BOC. Um we have seen an initial draft. This was during the part of the um report. The report was drafted prior to our last meeting and we did see the cash flow plan at our last meeting in March. Which was last week. So we are pleased with where we're headed with the cash flow plan. The fifth uh key function is to evaluate cost-saving measures. So there's a few points here I want to point out, which is the corporate business community sponsorship program that we are developing. To give as an example for the district to consider. Uh but we talked about uh. Continue to advocate for additional value engineering efforts to provide. Continued cost-saving as well as maximizing the value of the dollar being spent. Cornerstone reconciled the estimate of eighty five percent CD and are still um within two percent of the original budget set forth. Additional adjustments will be made to bid packages as they're returned. So things are still looking good on uh from our advantage and from our vantage point. Um the BOC has also implored the district to try to manage as much of the procurement of equipment. For CTE athletics, et cetera, as well as FFE. I think it's supposed to be FFA items are already planned. This will allow the district to save more money on Cornerstone's fee on expensive items while only absorbing minimal risk. The final key um. Key function to report on is this is bond adjacent items. And this is in response to the letter to the um school board from the BOC sent back in the summer. And um the two points are on maintenance and planning, but we just want to update you on that CSG is helping to the district develop. A plan for maintenance and will integrate the new projects. And FHS systems into the master package. The BOC highly recommends the board continue to follow up and monitor this issue during and post-bond work completion. And then the final point is long-term capital planning. The BOC recommends reinstating the facilities advisory committee that once ran from two thousand ten to two thousand fourteen. Um and uh assist in the sort of assessment of ongoing long-term capital planning. So in all in all, we are reaching the two-year mark and we are so pleased to know that um groundbreaking will be taking place next month. And um it really is a pleasure to be working with the district in this fashion and we um. Since last week, we brought on um one new alternate member and next week we will. Most likely confirm a second alternate member. So thank you for the opportunity to report.
Thank you, Anya. That's a great report. Uh open it up for questions from the board.
Uh the question that I have. You talked, Anya, about potentially. Increasing the number of dashboards and that that are available. And I think anything we can do to communicate with the public is is a great idea. The question being is. You're you also said that there hasn't been a lot of. Following of the meetings and such. I'm wondering, is. Our additional dashboards the best way of going or would this be something that maybe we want to consider? Having as a topic at one of the Facebook Live meetings or something to generate some interest. You know, I'm just throwing out ideas. I I don't know if what I'm suggesting is crazy, but it's, you know.
No, it's a really good point. Um you know, it's like, how do you drive engagement and then also? You don't want to be spinning your wheels and wasting resources, right? So you have to find that balance there. Uh you know, asking the public if you have good, really good engagement in the Facebook Live meetings on Thursdays, if that might be a great place to to hear that. I also wonder if it's not, you know, when we say dashboard, that's something we're tracking throughout time. I'm wondering if there's something that can just be put out and updated periodically. Um I know that like Ken Kiken had a phasing plan that he presented to us. And you know, maybe it's just a simple phasing plan that's, you know, the construction drawings of the phasing plan, but. You know, laid out in a way that is visually pleasing with, you know, the subject title of what people are looking at. Um, you know, I think there's. Easy ways to meet that need for the public, but also we don't need to, you know. Again, waste the resources where resources could be better spent somewhere else.
I I suspect we may see more interest when the ground starts turning over too.
Yeah, absolutely, which is a very exciting thing and we are really looking forward to seeing seeing that happen.
It seems like one of those Facebook lives, though, right around the time of the groundbreaking would be a great idea.
And I would offer if it's if it's needed, um someone from the BOC would be happy to attend that.
Another question that I have, you mentioned a few places in there, the. The relative value and value engineering. And maybe Mark can help address this too. How are those when BOC is making those recommendations? We get those in the report, but obviously those are things that. Needed or are an ongoing need. Is that those concerns, how are those being addressed or, I mean, you're making them known to us, but where do they go from there or? Is that something that's already being addressed?
Can I take that, Mark?
Yeah, so the the value engineering um information um was uh gathered from the Bond Oversight Committee. And shared through the uh same channels that all the rest of the comments. Um were uh given through CSG and the engineers and and the uh folks working on the project. So we actually gathered those up and and they were included in the in the uh. Value engineering assessment that Dykman put together.
Ultimately, I think Kevin, um. You know, we just want to keep tabs and say, hey, we need to keep remembering this and then conversation will come up with either. You know, Ken or um Heidi and texts and they'll say, oh, yeah, we, you know, we hadn't thought about it that way because we do have a couple experts on our committee who. Can speak a more eloquently about this specific topic of value engineering than I can. And um, you know, like, they bring up really great points, like they're watching the price of steel right now. And they're like, hey, have have you locked this price down? And um, you know, and then. We hear that, okay, it's being worked on. So great, because we've got people who are in the industry that are like freaking out that. You know, we may pay double, triple of what we need for steel. So it's nice to have that inside connection and then, you know, like, we also want the public to know. You know, when they watch or listen or read any of this, that we are saying, hey, we need to make sure that we're using these funds um appropriately. And we are, so it's good.
And I think that's important in the closure. I mean, we had that big value engineering report that went through and listed. But if I'm thinking if somebody just reads the BOC's report to us on the website. Are they seeing that closure that those are things that are being done? Um, you know, because it talks about the recommendation during it. I just want to make sure the public is getting the right perspective on it as well.
I think that's great feedback that we can actually incorporate into our reports as we move forward too.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would agree. I think highlighting the successes that we're having with the process and. The Bond Oversight Committee is it's really important.
Yeah, people people definitely appreciate when we get the best value and I think between the Bond Oversight Committee and the people that we're working with, the. The experts on the team, I think it's getting us a good value, so it's good to hear.
Other questions, comments? All right. Well, thank you again, uh Anya. That was a great report. You know, I I attend all of those meetings. And I can tell you how hard this group works and they asked probing questions and she's right, the. Everyone brings a different perspective and expertise and so there's a lot of good information that flows between the. People that we've hired to build the school and the people on the Bond Oversight Committee, so there's a. A good synergy there of of cooperation. So. Thank you and and please pass back to the members of the Bond Oversight Committee how much we appreciate their work.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening, all.
You're not gonna stay for the rest of the board meeting?
I have dinner waiting for me.
Thank you.
We have hours and hours more fun, Anya.
I'll catch up on Zoom later when I can't sleep tonight.
Thank you.
Take care. Bye bye.
Thanks, Anya.
All right, um the next item, five point oh two. Is also focus on district operations, report on capital bonds projects. It's a natural follow-up. To uh Anya's report. So it's it's also a standing topic on all of our school board meetings, so um I'm gonna turn the floor over to Mr. Deepak and Dr. Quinn for any updates.
Mark?
Thank you. Thank you, Andrew. Um so speaking of value, um that's kind of we've uh here hit uh kind of a a big milestone. Uh on the project here, just this last uh this last month. So you recall uh. And uh I gotta get my month straight. The last month, which was uh what, March? We had um, you know, kind of our first big bids um that that we went out to to bid and kind of had our first. Assessment of of where we really were in terms of of budget. On the project. And this month, um we had uh kind of the bulk of the rest of the of the projects actually went out to bid. So um between the two uh between the two different kind of uh. Two-day periods of of bidding in the last um the last two months. Uh we had over uh thirty packages, bid packages that were um on the street. We had over a hundred bidders. Um that actually submitted um uh bids to to work on the project. Um and we are in pretty good shape. We are um. Of just under the uh eighty million dollars worth of construction costs. On the project, we have now bid about seventy seven million dollars worth of the work. Um so almost all of it, all of the work that's being bid is is uh basically in at this point with a few minor exceptions. Uh got about three million dollars of unbid work at this point. So kind of go as we go through the rest of the project. And we're about 2.4% under what our target cost estimates were, which is really great news. So if you recall, part of our strategy and one of the reasons we worked really hard, and we, being mostly Dykman and their team, to put the drawings together in a very short timeframe, to get the design put together so we could get out early and get actually on the street and get our package, our proposal, our building out early in the bid cycle, when the contractors are very hungry, very aggressive to drive lower pricing. And that definitely worked in our favor. So we are, to the point in the project, we were actually able to, just yesterday, I guess, sign off on the auxiliary gym, which is our first bid alternate. So depending on where the budgeting came in, on the bidding came in on the project, whether or not we can afford to build the auxiliary gym. And we are in a position now that we've signed off on that as it will become part of the project. So, very exciting. The other, we believe there are also some other savings that are available in the, in the packages that have been submitted. We've had a couple of folks that have made some suggestions on how they could revise the scope potentially to save some additional cost. So we're evaluating those and going through a bunch of that starting on tomorrow, I guess. So, good news, bit of a flurry of activity around here, getting all the bids in and processed and vetted to make sure that everybody's proposal was good. We only had one of the bidders actually had to withdraw their bid because they had missed a few items in their proposals. They were significantly lower than the rest of the folks that bid in that area, which, when we first had the conversation with them, they thought they were going to be able to hang in there. But they realized they had some additional items that they had missed and there was no way they were going to be able to do it. So, better to find that out now, so we could go to the number two. And so, yes, we're in, we're in good shape on the bidding.
Great. Questions? Or Linda, you've got some things to report?
I do. I just, I have the, I want to report on the party planning. So, we're going, we're planning groundbreaking. Actually, we had a meeting today with a person from Cornerstone who helps us with that. But more importantly, with three of our student leaders at Ferndale High School and Jeremy and Marty Moravec. And it's going to be, well, the thing we have to figure out is what, where we are in the phasing. There are different phases for everything. How many people can actually come in person? But you seven board members will definitely be invited. And it's going to be April 27th at 4 o'clock. Our first choice is to have it on the field, as long as that that's not the day they're pulling down the grandstands. But, and our second choice will be to do it in front of Old Main. The kids have lots of ideas. I have some plans to go down and meet with them after spring break as they work out some of their, they're going to work on some rah-rah. You know, band cheerleaders. We, if we can only have 50 people, they're going to invite team captains and club presidents to represent the student body. If we can, we just don't, we're not sure yet what the size of the crowd can be. But it'll, we'll have the typical shovels and turn some dirt and some speeches. And we have a slot for a board member to say some words and one board member to be a dirt turner. So Andrew, either you or you can assign one of your colleagues. It's going to be exciting. And we, we've decided we need a celebration. And so we may not, while we may not be able to have the entire community come, we will livestream it. And we also made initial plans today to actually create a video production that has a little bit of touring of the inside, a little bit of the history of the building, a little bit of the groundbreaking, but something that we can then capture, that can capture this on video. Like Mark said, we're at the, this is the almost dead middle of this project. Design phase done, all the stuff that you don't see, we've been working like crazy to get done. Starting next month, the stuff you can see is going to start happening and that gets exciting. So, April 27th, 4:00 PM, same day as your next school board meeting. Hopefully you'll all be able to come in person.
That's exciting.
It is.
Really, yeah.
It is.
Yeah, really is. Questions for Mark and Linda from the board?
When will it be when you decide or when it's brought to the board who you award the bid to or you want to award the bid to?
Bids, mini bids.
Yes, yes.
We, that'll probably come out in one of my next bond update. Or, I mean, that information is already available. It's been given to the bond oversight committee.
The first batch of bids has been provided. The second batch is still making sure everybody's tight on their, on their numbers and we don't have any kind of a change. You know, the change, the one company that did have to withdraw, actually, it was a little later down the road that they actually figured out that they were going to have an issue. So, we're making sure we, Cornerstone is making sure that everybody's tied on their numbers and understands the scope of the projects. We've also got some alternates to assess before that's 100% finalized as well.
So, stupid question. So do you guys go through them and decide this is the best bid for these projects? And then just forward that bid or do you say these are the top three or how?
No.
Low, low bid.
Low bid. It's defined for us, Melinda.
So whoever's lowest that can do the work.
Yep, the lowest responsive bidder.
Okay, and you're, you've got most of that stuff done.
Yep.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
We have apparent low bidders on everything, right? It's just to finalize in the making sure 100%.
That they really got, that they really bid on what we want.
And there's a couple that, you know, the, you know, one of the bids is, it was a little bit higher than what we expected. There was only one bidder. So it's actually possible that we could reject that bid and then rebid. So there's some, you know, decisions to be made still.
So then, once you get all the bids or most of them, then you can start looking at the alternates and say, okay, we have money left over. Which of these can we do?
We're actually.
The auxiliary gym.
We're at the point now where we're digging in seriously on the, on the alternates and figuring out, okay, what do we have money to be able to afford? The auxiliary gym was a big one because that, kind of the aforementioned steel prices, that allows them to actually lock in materials and proceed with that, that will end up saving some money as opposed to us deciding later down the road.
And it's also the hardest thing to add later.
Yeah.
You know, gym space is hard, is a hard addition to make in a high school.
And it's attached to the building. You know, most of the other alternates are kind of standalone. So they're easier to add later in the project if we're able to.
Cool, thank you.
Is it too late for suggestions?
Probably.
Okay.
Well, it depends on what your suggestion.
If they're.
Well.
Yes.
In a couple of the meetings from the government to government, the schools were talking about the land acknowledgement for their, for their schools, the areas. And in the school, they had a separate, like, place where they put a plaque in the.
Oh, it's not too late for that. It's not too late, it's not too late for that, Jesse. We haven't quite gotten there yet.
Yeah, I don't know where we are in that process, but I wanted to say that.
Such a good timing for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's visible and it's meaningful or whatever. And then also, is it too late to suggest for like artists or cultural or whatever? We're gonna.
No, we haven't done that yet either.
Okay, I know when I ask, it's always not the right time, but I don't know when the right time is.
You will be notified.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
I just wanted to add this. I'm excited about the groundbreaking. I got to be at Cascadia's groundbreaking, which is still, I will never forget it. I also don't want to take a spot from a student. And so as important as I think that some school board needs to be there, if there are some, I don't want, if a student can take my spot, I am, I'm okay giving that up. So please keep that in mind when you're deciding and you're limited on how many can be there.
I, we will. That could be a hard decision. We were wrestling today. We don't know whether it's 50 or 200 or 400 because everybody's got different numbers. And so I will keep that in mind. Thank you.
Okay, great.
I'd send my student in my place. A little greedy there.
Any other questions or comments? Well, I certainly appreciate, again, all the work that's done, Mark, to review the bids and work with Cornerstone and CSG to, and Dykman to, I know it's a lot of work. And so thank you for that. And Linda as well. Thank you for all the work that's going on there from the team. And yeah, it's very exciting. We're getting down to where we'll actually see dirt and dust. And so that'll be fun. All right. Just for those who are watching, just a reminder that Dr. Quinn writes a weekly bond update that covers the happenings of the past week. And she publishes that every Friday. The last one that she did was number 101. So we're in triple digits now. So. Next item on the agenda is 5.03. And this has to do with soliciting donations and community sponsorships for the new Ferndale High School. I asked to place this item on the agenda of our February meeting in response to requests from the bond oversight committee. February committee, a small group of us have met and actually was in a different meeting with Dr. Quinn the night that they met, so I was not at that meeting. But we started mapping out a strategy for soliciting donations and scholarships. It's not ready to be published yet. And so I didn't really have anything to give you. It's just in draft form. But we're working on sort of a hierarchy of ways to look at the scope of donations and how we recognize those donations. Everything from small things to something large, like maybe someone wanting to pay for turf on the football field or pay for turf on the baseball field or a scoreboard. But there are also lots of smaller things that people might want to pick up and donate. And so we wanted to have a process in place. That's what we're, we're working on is a hierarchy of how that would work and how it would look. And so hopefully, it's quite possible that I'll have something more to report at the next meeting. But I'll glad to entertain any thoughts or questions at this point. Well, I'll keep, yes.
Is part of that conversation then things like buy a brick, get your name etched in a brick? I mean, is that part of this conversation too?
That sort of thing is, I don't know that specifically by brick was discussed. As I said, I was, unfortunately, was not at the meeting, but we've talked about those in the past, so I imagine we'll loop back to that as well. And part of that is community involvement as much as it's fundraising. Just, it's sort of a double bonus for us, yes.
At the meeting, Andrew, it was more the corporate and community level than, or corporate and business level than, there was some mention of smaller items, you know, bricks, courtyard, those types of things. And a lot of focus on how do you put value on and what does that value mean? And then just the whole aspect of perception of, you know, today's company that's well-liked is tomorrow's company that, you know, is destroying the planet or, you know, and again, kind of, I don't know how best to say that, but.
Right. And I forgot to, I should have mentioned, Kevin is on that committee, this subcommittee as well. So the two of us are representing the board on that committee and we'll bring back things at the next meeting. All right. So the next item is 6.01, and this is a revision of administrative policy 6600, which focuses on transportation. To explain the changes, I will turn the floor over.
Thank you, Andrew. So this is one of the administrative policies that we need to continue to update so we can stay current with the, with the WASTA templates. So we've got two of those tonight. This one deals with transportation. The biggest change on this is the addition of language that requires school districts to provide transportation for any student that has an infant. So whether it requires car seats or whatnot, we are basically required to provide either bus transportation or compensation in lieu of transportation for any students that need to transport their infant child to school with them. So then, and then some language changes, so it has, or designate to all of the references to the superintendent. And that's basically the change on this particular policy.
And these changes put us in proper stance with the state requirements, correct?
Right.
Okay, questions from the board?
No, but it makes me have visions of childcare in the school and other ways to support folks. So there's possibilities in this one. I don't know if this is the time to bring it up, Jesse, but I'm bringing it up.
All right, okay, I got it.
I have another stupid question and this is, school buses with seatbelts, where is Washington State with that?
They are not currently required. And actually, there have been numerous studies that have indicated that it actually is not a big safety benefit to have seatbelts on school buses. In fact, some of the studies have indicated it's actually more dangerous.
So I didn't read through this closely. Where would the infant child seat go? Because don't they need to be belted in?
It would, it would basically require a modification to one of the larger buses or some of the smaller buses do, are equipped with harnesses. That could be used to strap in a child seat.
So if a student or family needs this, they would contact who?
Transportation.
So do we already have buses? You said we have some buses with harnesses. Would there be much, would there be many things that we'd have to purchase and install? Are we in pretty good shape to adopt this?
Well, I, we have to. So.
I understand, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, you know, it depends. It would be a case by case. If it, the odds are, since this has not come up ever, as far as I can recall, we probably, our first option would be provide ever, as far as I can recall, um we probably our first option would be provide um compensation in lieu of um transportation. If that's a workable situation, otherwise we would either have to retrofit a bus or um use one of the smaller buses that currently has um that capability. Okay.
One reason it doesn't come up is because people didn't stay in school. So if this can keep students in school, okay.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to it. I'm just.
Yeah, I'm just saying this, this is a good thing and, you know, it's something that you hope, doesn't have to come up, but if it does come up, that it's available.
Is there like a program or something at this high school that I'm not aware of? Is there already?
And somebody else. Somebody else can probably weigh in this with more expertise, but there's a a program in Bellingham.
Most of our students who have babies go to a program in Bellingham. We've talked about um just because, and that's true across the county, because our smaller districts don't have enough students to have the program, but they have the grads program at two of their high schools, and that's a mother baby program.
And our school transports?
Yes, sometimes. It's a variety of, it depends on, it depends, like Mark says.
Linda, do you, and this is totally off the cuff, so apologies if it's not available, but do you know how many students stay in school and go to that program?
No. I, I could probably, I can, I don't even know how many students we have at this moment in that program.
Is that? I'm kind of stuck, because this is, I've never heard of this before. Is it in the student handbook that they have access to this transportation if they need it? I mean, how do you get the word out?
Council, you know, that. Councilors.
Okay. I, I, this is all new to me.
It's new.
Okay. Thank you. Well, that's good. I like that. It's good. You're keeping kids in uh you don't want to call them kids at this point, but students in in school anyways.
All right, any other questions or comments? If not, I will entertain a motion to revise administrative policy sixty six hundred as it has been presented to us.
I will make a motion to revise school board policy sixty six hundred transportation as attached here to and made a part of the minutes.
All right, it's been moved to revise policy sixty six hundred as explained by Mr. Dibok and presented to us in writing. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. So the next item, uh six point oh two is a revision of administrative policy sixty six hundred.
Yeah, so this is is uh very similar.
Focuses on program planning, budget preparation and adoption. So go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, so thi- this is very similar to the to the last one. It's just an update um to the to the WASD language. And it actually, it just adds a little more detail and a little more clarity, I think, to the budget process. There's nothing new in the, in the uh, in the, in the budgeting process or um the way uh we go about our business. It just, I think, describes it a little more thoroughly um a little more accurately. Um it references the July tenth deadline, um which I don't believe was in the language before. Um it updated, so it references the four year budget requirement that was uh new as of, you know, a few years ago now. It just includes a little more descriptive language, so people have, get a more um comprehensive um understanding of the process.
And as a clarification, this is policy six thousand. I said sixty six hundred, but this is policy uh six thousand. Yeah. Any questions for Mr. Dibok? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and move to revise school board policy six thousand. Program planning, budget preparation, adoption and implementation as attached to her to and made part of the minutes.
All right, it's been moved to revise policy six thousand as explained by Mr. Dibok and presented to us in writing. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. All right. So the next item on the agenda is six point oh three, and this is a request to revise our strategic commitments. And I want to remind everyone that the board's strategic commitments were first developed over a decade ago to frame all the work that occurs in the school district. The six commitments which express the board's highest values are now attached as an appendix to our operational expectations OE one policy, which focuses on our global expectations. Overall, the strategic commitments have worn well. However, earlier this month, Dr. Quinn proposed a change, which she wrote to us about in one of her Monday letters. Tonight, we have the opportunity to discuss the change she proposed and perhaps to act on it. I'll turn the floor over now to Dr. Quinn to explain the change and her rationale for it.
Oh.
And she's frozen. Frozen, Dr. Quinn.
It was a lot of hard work.
She's exhausted. Yes.
We'll give her, we'll give her a moment to thaw out. All right, she's on the move. Maybe I'll give her my computer, which is finished with its update.
Thanks, Fay. Um, sorry. I sent, I sent you my rationale, like as Andrew said, in one of my recent um letters. When we, when we drafted those um commitments, I mean, I think Andrew and Leanne and Kevin were there, but um we, we made a list of six. We had a long conversation about whether diversity and equity should be separate. We decided they should be. Um I, and I think, as Andrew said, they've worn well. But with all of the conversation we've had recently, um I'm, and we've, I'm just not comfortable with equity being number five on a list of six when we've been you saying that it should be the lens through which we're looking at everything. So I've sent you my proposed revision, which just takes number six and lifts it up to a uh overarching statement, uh leaves the other five, except that I've inserted the word equity or equitable into all of the other commitments. So I'm just asking for your approval to move forward with this version, because we're using these to frame our district improvement plan.
That first paragraph, the overarching all of our work, that's also new, correct?
No, that, well, it came from, I, I don't have it right here now, Melinda, I'm in. Um, if you mean, I.
We have the steps one through our, our commitments, one through five, and at the beginning of it, it says, oh.
Oh, that used, that used to be commitment five. There used to be six of them. I just, I'm just saying that I wa, I don't, I don't think equity should be fifth on a list of six. It should be this, no, so it's not new.
Okay, so you took, you took that one, which was like at the bottom of the list, rather than have it be like, we say this is important, this is, oh, no, by the way, we were thinking about equity the whole time. Now you're saying we're going to be thinking about equity from the beginning, and here's our.
And, yes.
Got it.
That's all. So, so the wording is slightly different, just because to make it fit that spot, but it's basically the same six commitments rearranged.
That's the same thing WASD, the um WASD board did with the WASD goals and commitments. Equity was down below, and then a year or so ago, we decided it needed to be up at the top. So it's, it's following that protocol and that um that model, which makes absolute sense to me.
I, I would say that it, equity is by definition, it would make sense. My only concern is I have been in these board meetings where I've heard, you know, when we've talked about different things with equity, where we said one group or another, well, we don't need to worry as much about them, because they'll make it anyway. And in my mind, that concerns me. If we're talking equity, that's not really the definition of equity. If we go to the definition, you know, that we're going to provide each student with uh an opportunity or what they need to be successful, and that's our lens of equity, then I can work with that.
I think, Kevin, I would, I would agree with that. It's each student. It's what does each student need to be successful.
Right.
Does it say all now?
Yeah, it, it says, uh.
I, I, I should have it, but I don't have it in front of me.
It says high quality educational opportunities for all students, but also high level outcomes for all.
Yeah.
So are you saying change those to each?
I, I'm a, I'm a fan of each. And we had this conversation at the Monday um Equity Committee meeting, because each looks at each person individually. All, you can lose some people.
All right, that's an easy change to make. I like that, too.
So, and we actually, in WASD, which is a little redundant, we said each and every. So we did encompass the all in the every and the each. So I, I don't know if the English teacher and you will let that happen, but there is.
I'm getting relaxed. I can use, I can use there as a singular pronoun now.
So, so consider each and every.
Okay. Will do. And this can be, this.
How are you not saying every? Pardon? If you say each child, how are you not saying every child with that?
It, I don't know. It reinforces it. It feels, yeah.
I, I think it reinforces it, and I think it puts it in the, each is a singular every in the group, in my mind. So it's a little redundant, but I think there's some, some benefit to that, too.
But each is more focused.
Yeah.
And every is, we won't forget anybody, I guess.
Yeah.
And, and you can, um, you can just all say fine, and that would be consensus. If you're not, you know, or you could have a motion, but this, this is not a, you know, this is our work. It doesn't require a motion to make the change. It's up to you.
And this is, this realigns these, but are, are there functional things that change because we were making this change? Are there?
No.
No.
No, the, these are the, these are not, these are the statements of your values.
Yeah.
We translate these values into actions, goals and actions every year, but um, no.
I would think if we are restating or if we are reworking how we state our values, that that deserves a motion.
Okay.
So. Everybody ready for a motion? Or Andrew, do you ask that question?
Yeah, sit back.
Watch out, Andrew. She's gunning for your spot.
No, she's not.
Easy to take, easy to take. Uh I just will preface that uh with any other questions or comments uh on this topic. Now I will entertain a motion.
Well, I would like to make a motion to revise the school board's strategic commitments as attached here to and made a part of the minutes.
So we have a motion to attach our strategic commitments as explained by Dr. Quinn and as presented to us in writing.
With a couple minor changes, with those little minor.
With the minor changes that were noted. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, changes are made. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item six point oh four, and this is the adoption of calendars for the twenty one, twenty two and twenty two, twenty three school years.
Andrew, while you're, while you're discussing that, I'm going to go back and restart my computer and rejoin, okay?
And Linda, hang on a second. I was just going to say to you and Fay, my other computer is now rebooted. So if this computer I've been using needs to be pulled back into service, it can be.
Okay, well, I just would feel better if I were in my office where all my papers are. Thank you, Fay.
Understood.
This feels like musical chairs. Leanne, I'll be coming over to your house.
So by law, the school calendar between the district and the teachers' union. By the time the proposed calendars come to us for our review and approval, that part of the process has already occurred. So at this time, I'm going to turn the floor over to Dr. Britt, who facilitated the calendar development process this year. Dr. Britt?
Apologies, just changing our locations and changing computers. Um this is our world, right? Thank you, Andrew. As Andrew said, um the school year calendars are a negotiable item with our teachers' union. So we form um a committee between our district staff and our teachers' union have their representatives on that committee. And we worked together to develop two calendars for each school year um that we mutually agree upon. Um and then for that upcoming school year, the teachers' union take a vote on which of the two calendars they like, like would prefer us to go with. Um and then the teachers, after being presented with that vote, comes back to us. And we had a very clear majority um this year, and we actually worked together to develop both the school year calendar for twenty one, twenty two and twenty two, twenty three. So we have presented to you two consecutive school year calendars, and these have been voted on by our teachers' union. Uh the two calendars for both years we presented to them were what the first calendar was to start before Labor Day, and then the second calendar was to start after Labor Day. And um in this case, the majority of votes for both school years were for us to start before Labor Day, which is the calendar you see um before you. So they were the majority votes. A couple of highlights, just, um like I said, we're starting before Labor Day. Spring break will continue to be the first full week in April. We have also continued to recognize Treaty Day on our calendars. And just like with our um holidays that we're more familiar with, of course, now we're very familiar with Treaty Day, like Martin Luther King, um Memorial Day, we follow it on, if it, the holiday is on a weekend, we recognize that if it's a Saturday, we recognize it on a Friday. If it's a Sunday, we recognize it on a Monday. So you'll find that we've done the same with Treaty Day. If it is, falls on a weekend, we've recognized it on either the Friday or the Monday. Um so we're excited to keep that as part of our recognition and our calendar. Um. So once the um board approves the two calendars, what we will do again is we'll reconvene our committee and add into those calendars our early release days and our conference schedules, and then publish the calendar widely. But at least this way, we have the holidays set, the first day of the school year set, the last day of the school year set. Um and we've continued to um include snow days, although what that could look like in the future is um will be interesting to see where we can go from there, but we have built snow days into the calendars for both the next two years. So do you have any questions?
My one question that I know comes up is, um when is high school graduation? And I don't know if that's been part of your conversation or or who gets to pick that one, because I know families like to know well in advance.
Yep, great question, Leanne. Thank you. That is one that we will add in when we reconvene, knowing the dates are set. Yep. Great question, Leanne. Thank you. That is one that we will add in when we reconvene, knowing the dates are set. Any other questions? Just a big shout out, the committee that we had this year was great and we, I think we put it together in one session. Really, really great committee. So I appreciate the input from both, from our teachers that were a part of that.
All right, if there are no other questions, I will entertain a motion.
So I would move to adopt the calendars for 2021, 22 and 2022, 23 school years as attached here too and made a part of the minutes.
All right. It has been moved to adopt the calendars for the 21, 22 and 22, 23 school years as presented here too and made a part of the minutes. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, Carrie, it's great.
Thank you very much.
All right, the next item on the agenda is a review and discussion of the superintendent's monitoring report for our operational expectations policy, OE3, which focuses on the school district's relationship with an engagement of community stakeholders. I want to remind everyone that the purpose of the board's operational expectation policies is to let Dr. Quinn and her, her team know how we expect the district is to run. The board regularly monitors how well our policies are being implemented. So to do so, we asked the superintendent to provide us with the monitoring reports on each of our operational expectations policies according to a prearranged schedule. We received Dr. Quinn's report on policy OE3 at our February meeting. And at this time, I will open up for a discussion of that report.
So I can start.
Good.
Um. This made me tired. Um, I read it and as, as always, I am, I am humbled by the amount of work all of you do to help communicate with our community. And I know it, it, it gives us mixed results. And um, I don't know how to do it any better. I, I think there is so much in here. Um, it's, it is, it's tiring. I did appreciate on the very back, I love infographics. So I appreciated this addition because it gave me a snapshot. I, I did read through all of it. I found the majority to be compliant, a few that were partially compliant. And I, and to me, the partial compliance are partly because they are so complicated. And it depends on how you define compliance in that moment. So, and the only one I found non-compliant was that the annual report to the community hasn't happened. And I can see where that's important. And I will say, Linda, I think of your mural that you did the first year you were here with that timeline of our year. That was a fabulous annual report in some ways. So what that report looks like, I think, could very much vary. But the work represented in this front and back pages, I was like, oh my gosh, it's really stunning. So thank you.
I had said in my commendations, and it's been repeated many times over this past year, that one of the pandemic perks that we've had is the amount of video that we've added for communication, whether it be Facebook or whether it be Zoom meetings or meeting with, you know, webinars and such where people can be making dinner and watching, or they can be participating in it. I think in the future, you know, a lot of that where you can watch something and get the information is very helpful to people. Linda, your letters to the community are very informative and very dense, but at times it might be that, you know, people don't have the time to read it type of thing. And sometimes just watching something is a great way to get information and to get to know who the leaders in our district are. And the, everything that you guys have done this year with COVID and really jumping on the video, I think has been fantastic and really helped with communication.
I, I would echo and agree that it's amazing the amount of things that we're doing to you know, try and communicate. It was kind of interesting listening to Anya talk about from the BOC's standpoint that, you know, they've got these things up and there's been limited engagement and, you know, something that we've, you know, understood, recognized, tried to help. But a lot of amazing things that are in here. Couple of, of suggestions or thoughts that I had going through. One was they were talking about the complaint, the complaint form, complaint process. And indicating how we don't have a specific complaint form or a specific guideline. It's kind of scattered and there was talk about making a, a specific complaint form. And part of me says, yeah, it'd be nice if the process is somewhere, but not all complaints come in one size fits all. So I think having multiple avenues for people to address those things would be helpful. The, you know, as long as we have it outlined, people know where to go and how to do those things. The other thought that I had as along with just little notes here and there. But one of the things when we do our annual budget review, which has always again been one of those things that you would think that people would be more interested, it'd be nice to get out there. You know, making that part of a Facebook Live or, you know, now that we're doing it on Zoom, it gives people a little more opportunity. And, you know, we've already talked about continuing that once we get back into live broadcasting or meetings. But that was just a thought of how maybe we could get that information out more so to the public. Like I said, just thoughts off the top of my head.
Yeah, I'll again echo what folks have said, but I was just thinking about how, you know, looking back, you know, five years, eight years, three years, in some cases, just the strides we've made in, in the ways that we reach out to our stakeholders has expanded so much. And there's still lots that we can do and I think lots to learn, but you've, you've led the district in, in a way that is reaching out in, I think, ways that we couldn't even imagine, you know, three or four years ago. So I, I think that's great. I think the Facebook Live, the video as well. I think these things have changed the way we communicate with the community, but in a, in a positive way. And then some things have changed, not because of, of COVID, but just because it was a good way to reach our stakeholders. So it's very impressive.
I, I'd also like to commend, you know, Linda and her team in the reports. You know, all the reports you've given us have been very well balanced. You know, it would be easy to, you know, kind of pick and choose all the good things and, you know, because we've got a lot of good things. But you give us a real balanced approach of, you know, you give us the good, the bad. Occasionally the ugly when it exists. Thankfully, there's not much of it, but I appreciate that. So thank you.
I would like to say that I appreciate all the work that Linda does. I'm amazed and I get overwhelmed reading all the things that she does and all the stuff that her staff does. And I really appreciate, I mean, I, I had no idea and I really appreciate it down to all the details and yeah, we do need feedback and we do need to know what's going on. And if we don't, we've got a place to ask and not be afraid to do that. I appreciate that.
I think the thought process about whether we continue surveys in the same way we did in the past, that, that was interesting to think about and maybe surveys aren't the be all end all. And there should be some shifting of what goes in here for monitoring from time to time too. I, I love how we're working at increasing student voice as part of the process. To me, if we're going to do more of anything, that's the thing to do more of.
Go Kong.
It would also be interesting to see too, the when we are reaching people, you know, those metrics that Leanne showed, that page that shows how many clicks and such. How many of those are repeat customers? How many is it, you know, branching out to, to new people that we haven't reached before? I don't know how that is measured and I don't know if it's something I want to spend a whole ton of time looking for. But if you can find that sort of tool so that we know that we're not just speaking to the same choir over and over.
I just, I just want to remind you though too, that a year ago right now, we had five people working on communications. I had another administrator working on communications. I had a prof tech working on communications and we had two administrators because Tammy Benjen did some of it. So I just want to remind you that our staffing is Kelly Warner and me.
Yep. And I want to tell you, you guys have done a fantastic.
Well, I, I know, but I just have to remind you that when you ask Kelly, Kelly revised and brought out the, the infographic you're talking about, Leanne, is one that Andrew used to do for us when we had the Communications Advisory Committee. And I asked Kelly to revive it and she figured out how to do that. But I just want, want to manage your expectations on what Kelly and I can do.
I think with, with those limitations this year though, all of the outreach that you have done to different groups is phenomenal.
And, and I granted, I have another, I have team of people that's doing things like Facebook Live, but all of the coordination of that, there is no communications team anymore, except us.
One, one question and, and I think, Linda, you make a good point is recognizing the number of people in the bodies to do it. You know, one thing, following up with Melinda's comment with the, the different groups. And, and I was trying to balance this as I was thinking about it. You know, we do the Facebook Live and we have the consistency of the Thursday afternoon time. So people know when to expect it, know when it's there. But I was also thinking, if I was trying to watch that, it, there's no way I can because I work Thursday afternoons at that time.
And it's recorded, it's recorded and published.
Right. And, and so there's that option, but you don't have that interactive ability at that point. So, you know, I don't know if that's something, you know, that we consider that we talk about because you lose if you're bouncing the times. I mean, that's one of the reasons we have the school board meeting, same time, study session, same time, we keep it consistent. But that was just one, you know, thought I had for discussion, but.
All right, other comments or thoughts? All right. Well, thank you, Dr. Quinn, for this report and thank you, board members, for your comments, which I will record on a cover sheet to accompany the OE3 report. If you have made written comments, Kelly Warner will pick those up when she comes to you for your signatures. And then I'll incorporate those into a review. As a reminder, we will vote on this policy at our April meeting through our consent agenda, just as tonight, we will be voting to accept the report on results policy, 2.3 on science that we discussed at our February meeting. All right, with that, we'll move on to the next item, 6.06. And this is a resolution to allow the high school principal the discretion to issue an emergency waiver of high school graduation credits when a student's graduation status has been adversely affected by the pandemic. To explain the waiver process more fully and answer questions, I will turn it over to Dr. Britt.
Thank you, Andrew. As you may have remembered from last spring, the State Board of Education put in an emergency graduation waiver for last year's seniors to help offset some of the challenges caused by the pandemic. So they have recently, legislature recently approved a law designed again to help us students impacted by the pandemic. This allowed the State Board of Education, the authority to create the emergency waiver process for our current seniors. So that's the class of graduating class of 21. And what it does is it allows us on an individual case by case basis to waive up to two additional credits. And I say additional because our high school principal has the authority to waive two elective credits currently. So it allows us to waive again, on a student individual basis, two credits to remove barriers for some of our students to help ensure that they can graduate. So we have applied to OSPI and the State Board of Education for the authority to be able to grant that waiver. And we're asking for the school board to adopt the resolution so that we can then enact that and waive those credits for individuals as needed. As I mentioned, we can already waive up to elective credits, but this would allow us to waive an additional two and, and either electives or core credits. One of the stipulations there though, is that only one credit can be waived in the subject area. So I couldn't waive two credits of English or two credits of math. So that, that is a stipulation. And we, when we go through this process, we work with the individual students that it, and I say we and talk about my team, our counselors, our administrators. So they work with each student to ensure that they understand any implications for those waivers for other high school and beyond planning purposes. So that they really, you know, know what that means for them and potentially impact, could impact their future. So we obviously try our best to not use the waivers, but to help kids find pathways and ways to meet their credit requirements. So like I said, this is more of a really special basis for those kids that really need it. In talking to Jeremy, we were in a position last year where classes suddenly weren't offered that kids were planning to take. So we're not anticipating as many of our students being in a position this year like they were last spring because we, we've had all year, we've been able to plan for that and work with our students in their high school and beyond planning. But we also understand that there are a lot of challenges, particularly with remote learning and just the situation that we've been in this year has been really hard for some of our kiddos. So we will still make sure that even if we grant those waivers, that we're meeting their high school and beyond plans. And it's a team of people that makes a determination, counselors, principal, to determine that that is in fact, you know, to their best interest and what they need to help them. So that's what we're asking you to approve a resolution for is to allow us to be able to do that.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Britt.
Any questions that I can answer?
What kind of impacts do you discuss with the students that it might have on their future?
Again, Melinda, that's more of a case by case basis in terms of talking through their high school and beyond plan, talking about the, you know, desire either to move into the workforce or to attend college and potentially not even now, but in the future, so that they understand that those implications may have an impact later down the road if they choose to go in a different direction. But our counseling team is, is great at working through that high school and beyond planning process with, with our students.
Are there ways that they could make those up later if they needed or wanted to?
Um, that's a really good question on, once they've graduated, whether they would go back. And I would imagine at that point that we would probably connect them back with community college. But that's a good question I can look into with Jeremy.
And as far as like community college or, or, or going on to college. As far as like community college or or going on to college or trade school or whatever the case might be. Is there cooperation at this point between those those programs and high schools for kids who have had to take a waiver? I mean, how big of an impact does this just, does this taking waiver have on on the child's or students? Forward motion?
One of the things that we are finding is actually, and it doesn't directly answer your question, Andrew, because again, it it really is for individuals and where they're at. But one of the things that we're seeing a trend in is colleges not requiring an SAT score for admittance. So they are definitely kind of changing their thought process around what they're looking for and their students, future students and application applicants.
Okay. Other questions?
I just a comment, it seems to me that in these times when everybody has struggled to grant some some grace and I see a much more devastating impact for kids that wouldn't graduate because of those one or two credits and never get that high school diploma. At least if they have the high school diploma, they have options after that. So I am fully in support of this, and I appreciate, Fay, that you're talking about, there's a team that works with the students. This isn't something that's going to be decided easily, I'm sure. So I am glad that the State Board decided this is a flexibility that we could grant our students if it's needed.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, then I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution 241R, Emergency Waiver of High School Graduation Credits.
I would happily move to approve Resolution 2419R, Emergency Waiver of High School Graduation Credits, as attached here too, and made a part of the minutes.
All right, it has been moved to adopt to adopt a resolution 241R9 on 2419R, Emergency Waiver of High School Graduation Credits. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Well, we are going to be here a while tonight. So the next item on the agenda, 6.02, is a discussion about resuming in-person school board meetings. In February, the governor lifted the prohibition on in-person public meetings. However, a number of health and safety rules still apply to meetings like ours that fall under the Open Public Meetings Act. Last month, we talked about resuming in-person board meetings. But we decided that that for this month, there were too many logistical considerations related to recording, broadcasting, distancing and screening in-person audience members for us to make that transition quickly. We talked about how much greater public attendance has been since we've been holding our meetings via Zoom webinar. So we put this topic back on the agenda for tonight's meeting to find out if your perspectives on returning to in-person school board meetings have changed. And now we can talk more about the pros and cons of doing so. So at this time, I'm going to open it up for discussion. I mean, one of the logistical issues that we had was we we weren't sure that we had the necessary equipment to even broadcast and record as we were sitting in in a room together. So I don't know if there's an update on on the technology side of that, because that's certainly a consideration.
No.
Okay.
We would probably have to hire someone.
And would, are you saying have to hire someone for each meeting or to help us get to the point that we could operate?
No, to hire someone to do it at each meeting.
Each meeting, okay.
We don't have a staff person to do it.
Understood.
Or the equipment to do it.
So it's also hiring a company basically to come in and run the tech technology side of the meeting then.
What do you think, Mark? I don't think currently we have anyone to do it.
No, we'd have to get some, we'd have to get some support. Whether it's an individual person or a company, we'd have to bet that out.
We've we've talked about, you know, moving forward, you know, even when we are back in person broadcasting and such. You know, and and is it just broadcasting and recording in general? Or is it with the specific requirements of having overflow space and people and screening? You know, just in the sense of if if we're looking to broadcast long term or record our meetings in the future, you know, then it's probably something that maybe we should start looking into. If it's something that, you know, once we get limit, the limits of COVID out of the way, then maybe that's a different story. You know, certainly, I know that some of our discussion tonight, we've had some challenges with, okay, who's going to talk next? Or people talking and granted, we can, we can work on those and etiquette and such. But I know personally from going from Zoom meetings to some of the in-person meetings, as far as work wise, we all agree that the in-person meeting is a lot more conducive to conversation. You know, so my my vote would be that once we can get back into in-person, I would favor going that route. But we need the logistics too, and I I recognize that there's a lot of things pulling and a lot of demands on the limited staff right now. So I don't want to be, you know, I don't want that to go unrecognized, but you know, kind of meaning to figure out a game plan long term.
So are you saying that you would favor having virtual meetings until we had the logistics to be in-person and broadcast or?
Well, I think we, I think there's rules that if we do meet, we have to, you know, we have to meet, we have to have a place set up that we can potentially broadcast to if we max out our our space size, depending on what that is. But we also have talked moving forward of either broadcasting or having the meetings so that people can, you know, they can be recorded or watched from home, live, or whatever the case may be. So I guess what we probably need to do is figure out what our our goal is and then work to develop a plan moving towards it.
And it seems like currently, under the current restrictions to keep everyone safe, it's really a multiple staff job. Setting up the room and spacing people out and checking them as they're coming in, I'm guessing is part of that process. Deciding if there's overflow, where they're going to go and setting up that space. It it feels, I too am excited for in-person at some point. I don't know if putting that on everybody in the midst of the more important decisions around bringing our children back into school, if it makes any sense to spend time on getting us back together in the same space.
Yeah, I think that we can definitely, the the pros and cons of getting us back or the importance of getting us back in person is a far second in my mind to getting the students back. You know, very distant second.
Yeah, I would certainly agree with that and. You know, I would, I would want to to know more about what the per meeting cost would be like for us to to do that, including what we would have to pay staff to be there at night to do the various pieces that we would have to do.
Mark and I can run some estimates.
I I still look forward and hope that we can broadcast meetings in the future. But maybe after the point of having an overflow room and having somebody who has to clean everything and take temperatures and that sort of.
Yeah.
Well, and hopefully, as more and more people get vaccinated, some of those requirements will, you know, come down a little bit too. Hard to say, I mean, is there still a lot of variables out there?
Yeah.
And thinking forward to the new high school, is there going to be any of this kind of technology in the new high school that it would make sense to have our board meetings there? And that just, that just was a brilliant moment right now, which is just for processing and and thinking future wise.
There's a donation and sponsorship opportunity right there.
And you know, you could broadcast things like, you know, if somebody couldn't make it to freshman orientation or something like that. There's a lot of things you could broadcast, maybe.
And with that, we knocked Linda off the screen again.
I was gonna say. She's gone. Challenges, just like we're doing. So my sense is is that there's a consensus that for the immediate future, we continue to meet as we are currently. And that Linda and Mark can explore what it might look like to get us back into a meeting area. And then beyond that, explore what it might look like at the high school with the technology that's going to be available there for that. Whether it's in the new building or perhaps in the Performing Arts Center.
I think Linda already left to go start getting the answers.
I I think so. I think she's down at the Performing Arts Center right now. All right, so for the immediate future, then we will continue to meet as we have been meeting until we get some additional answers. We can put this on our agenda for. We could push it out to May, really, if you want.
Unless something big changes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why don't we circle back in three months? And see where we are at that point? Is everyone comfortable with that? All right, thank you. Okay, that's what we will do. All right, we'll move on to the next item. This is a continuation of the discussion regarding the selection of a new superintendent. So just a reminder that we decided at our special meeting on March 16th, to appoint Assistant Superintendent Mark DeBock to act or to serve as Acting Superintendent when Dr. Quinn retires on September 30th, now September 30th of 2031.
I picked up on that.
Just wondering.
I'm getting a little punchy, I think.
Yeah, so when Linda, when Linda retires in 2031, Mark will step in. But he'll serve in that capacity for nine months until we bring a new superintendent on board July 1, 2021, which is a start date for the vast majority of superintendent contracts across the country and the likely date when a new leader will be available to work. Now that we've made.
2022.
Yeah.
Did I say 2021? I'm sorry, July 1, 2022. I got my dates crossed up again, that 31, 2031 threw me, got me off my rhythm. So now that we've made that decision about an interim superintendent, we can start talking about a timeline for the search process, which it needs to begin, you know, with the hiring of a search firm. And once we've hired a search firm, they will help us map out the rest of the steps. So tonight, I'm hoping we can talk about when we want to put out an RFP, a request for proposals for search firms who would like to do this work for us. And I'm just wondering what your thoughts are.
Andrew, for those that haven't been through that process, what's involved with the RFP? What's, you know, what what kind of steps in that and and who's involved in those steps? As far as, you know, again, being recognizing the amount of workflow and who's doing things and and kind of when it's important to get that done by.
Well, and Leanne, jump in here, because I'm thinking back to when we did this in 2008. But my recollection is that it was a decision that that we developed an RFP and there there are
Model.
Models that we can, and we actually have some that we can can use to to post and and areas where we would post those. But that it was a board decision and we would come up with some interview questions for the firms that reply. And and again, I think we can look to ESD to help us craft some of those questions. But just general questions about their track record and their, you know, scope of their services and what size districts they work with and that sort of thing. But I, as I recall, that's a joint decision by the board as to who is selected, which firm is selected to do that.
Yeah.
What's that?
I was gonna say, we actually interviewed the firms.
Yes, yeah, we interviewed the firms and the final decision was a board decision.
Absolutely, yeah. So but what I don't think I know, because we weren't involved directly, is who puts, you say there's an RFP template, you know, who makes sure that gets out there? I mean, that that ends up taking up staff time, the board doesn't do that. The board has to have time to be there to interview, to narrow down, if there's a whole bunch of firms, to narrow down to like three firms and then spend an afternoon interviewing each of those firms and just making a decision.
Yeah.
Oh.
I I would suggest that John can do that. That's what HR people do is, you know, it's basically putting out a job posting.
There it is, John.
All right.
And and so, John, with this, would we just ask John to put out an RFP or do we need to craft the RFP?
I think you should meet with John.
Okay.
Maybe, and talk, talk about that. And there's lots of models and Larry will help you.
Well, yeah, Larry has sent us a model RFP to use. I want to be sure that anyone who wants to be involved or have have comments or thoughts about that, that they get to express those. So I just want to be sure that we're we're clear on that.
I would love to review the RFP before it goes out.
Okay, that's certainly something we can send out to all board members and ask you to take a look at it and be sure you're comfortable with it. And then, once we then, once we get the RFPs back, you want to have us, John, to review and bring us a list of several to consider? Or how much input do you want to have in the the narrowing down of of those those firms? And I don't have a sense for whether we're going to get eight, 12 or four. I I don't have a good sense. I know we've already been contacted by a couple, just, you know, the word is out that we're going to be looking. So there are firms that are reaching out and whether they work with with districts our size or not, we don't know at this point.
I'm guessing you'll get five or six.
Five or six.
It seems like it might be a study session.
Could be, and we could actually get some, like Larry Francois might be able to give us some direction on those as well. And places that have used those firms, we can certainly do reference checks. I mean, there are a lot of options for us before we agree to spend funds on a search firm.
Would he attend our study session, Larry Francois?
Yeah.
Ask him.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we could ask him, I couldn't speak for him, but but he's been very helpful so far.
Especially if it's virtual.
True.
Yeah, it does make it easier.
Yeah, it does. And I suspect our interview with the firms will be virtual as well, so.
So what's the timeline for these, John, as far as putting that out and collecting and back and forth? When do, backtracking, when do we have to?
Well, I guess that's my question for for you. Andrew and I can, we'll adjust when we're going to meet based on when you want that RFP to go to go out.
Well, our past conversations, we've talked about the fact that most. most applicants are going to be late, like Sept- not September, but more in the November range, maybe December, as opposed to early fall. And so, getting our, our name out, like before summer break, doesn't feel like that's necessary. Because we're going to step into it, we could step into it in July and still have plenty of time to put that process in. That's my perception. I'm open to anyone else's thoughts on that. But if we're not going to be interviewing people until later in the fall or sort of mid-winter even, in order to have someone picked by, say, February or, or whenever, March even. But have someone known to us by first of March. Then selecting a search firm can be a little bit later. It doesn't have to be like now.
But our search firm would help us work with the public to decide what we want in a superintendent, right?
Yes, yeah, there, there will be a public process to it.
So how long does that take for them to do that work? Is that a one month, two month type of period? Do we kind of figure that's happening in October, November? Or is that happening September, October?
I was, I would guess September, October.
So if we wanted to have our search firm picked by the beginning of September when school starts, would we put out the RFP in July?
I, I feel like we're, we're doing a lot of speculating here. I think maybe the smart thing to do would be for Andrew and I to sit down with, with Larry Francois. And we create a timeline and, and bring that to the, the next meeting. So we can kind of lay this whole process out, beginning with, you know, what Andrew was just saying about when we want to have the new superintendent seated. Work backwards from there. And, and we come to you with a proposal rather than guessing how long each piece and what those pieces are going to be.
I think we do have the gift of time right now because of the, what we've decided. I, I would be more inclined to do things a little bit sooner, Andrew, than, than you're talking about, just in regards to getting that search firm. I don't think we have to put that off very long, because then that gives us more time to talk to them and figure it out. So I think, John, what you proposed makes perfect sense to me.
Right.
And don't forget the piece that, um, like LaConner just posted their superintendent. They kept, they had that posting out for two months. So if you want to interview and, you know, depending on when you want to interview. So anyway, yeah, I think making the timeline sounds smart.
Yeah, that's what we don't want to do is, is find ourselves next late winter still scrambling to find someone.
And I, and I will tell you, I, the latest news, the Linden superintendent has resigned. So that's another, that's three out of seven. Who knows? These search firms could be tied up. There are so many retirements and resignations.
Alright, well, John and I can meet. And we can bring back a timeline to our April meeting. And we'll, if we approve the timeline at that point, we'll move ahead with an RFP.
I will reach out to you this weekend. Drew just set a meeting for us to get going.
Perfect. Is everyone comfortable with that then? I can't see Jessie, but I'm gonna assume she's okay with it. Yes, okay. Alright, well, this is gonna be a great process. Sad, but great. And so it's gonna, we're gonna have to put in, it'll be a lot of time and probably a lot of Zoom meetings for us. But it will be worth it for the community and for our schools. Thanks. So the next series of items represent regular opportunities for sharing by participants in our board meeting. So we'll start with our student school board members. Kong, I understand among other things that you're going to share with us a statement you made to our legislators during the recent WASTA sponsored day on the hill. So Kong, I'll turn it over to you.
Hi, um, it's super late, but sad, sad news is I have a lot to share.
Okay, good.
So, um, for my report today, first, I guess I'm going to start with my thought change progress. Um, I written everything now on a tech doc, text document again, so I'm just going to be reading it off as if I'm talking. So after some time with my conjoint meeting with the thought action team, Dr. Quinn and the leadership team, I switched one of my classes to, uh, on my second semester in school to leadership two. So now I am working with Mr. Moravec on starting my project of students' voice. Our first step right now is to working in creating our first thought change or test it within our leadership class. A couple of weeks ago, we had a class period where lots of student pitch in and helped refine the structure of the question that we'll be asking on our first thought change. At the end of the day, if I remember it, we came up with the question of if you have the power, ability to change or fix the culture of our school, what would it be? Why would it be important? The project is kind of slowly progressing since I, I don't, since every time I have an idea or details, I have to wait a while to work with Mr. Moravec, since I don't have an account yet on my independent time. However, I think that the question right now is a good start as we could gather some initial inputs from students and build up other question beyond the aspect of school, uh, culture and environment. Um, I think that in a way, this question could help identify students' feelings about our school system and how it's functioning during these time of the pandemic and hybrid mode. During our discussions on the topic, how we could structure the question, there were a lot of, um, great examples and suggestions. One that stand out to me the most was the prospect about inclusivity right now within our Ferndale High School. Um, according to an, an anonymous student, there were a lot of talks throughout, um, our school building that seniors have been feeling left out lately. There weren't enough, um, resources or aspect that could help incorporate senior student this year. Lots of fun, exciting stuff like prom and other things like missing. So, um, many are feeling like it's, um, their time right now is not as important or just forgotten. Even though, even though this is their last year in high school, many don't feel the excitement or motivation. They need to continue learning or finish their high school journey. As a suggestion, I think that as we are shifting our phases or coming back to normal school slowly, sometime this next month, we should develop a plan that could leave senior students this year with some special memories before sending them off to their independent lives. So, um, I'm going to stop here for now and see if, uh, anyone have any comment or question.
I'm wondering who put the banners on the bridge?
Uh, I, I'm not sure about that.
And tied all those things that say, we love our seniors or something like that.
Oh, there, there were a lot of posts about that. I, I saw that on Instagram.
Oh, I, I just saw it on the bridge.
Um, next. So, and next, on next note, um, it's just a little fun note. I am running for FHS ASB president for next year. I don't know, I just wanted to comment on this, like, for what I've been like doing for the past week. I think that my campaign so far is doing great. The reason why I wanted to become an ASB officer, even though I'm already in the school board, is one, I wanted to connect more with students. As my project, it abouts, is about student voices within our school. And also second is to help create a new culture and environment within our school where future student can feel great in. As, um, as we are transitioning from the old high school to the new, new high school soon, I believe that, um, even though our school spirit all these years have been like on sports or something that correlate with the aspect of playing sports, I wish that our school could potentially open up more opportunity to bring in more topics that are concerning with like other majority of the students. My goal is to bring in conversation, engagement, and also connection with different clubs as they are one of the reason that shape our school. Um, I think that within this time period right now, question that is concerning the prospect of mental health, diversity, and also equity or an engagement has been on the sideline where it could come up once or twice a year and no one ever talked about it again. I think that as we are building a new high school on the outside, we should also create a new or fix up our high school environment on the inside. Who knows? I think that one day we could see a rise in student motivation and engagement where there are more opportunity and possibility that could help student be a part of something they love and interested in for now. And I'm going to pause there again. Yeah.
No, I, I think it's, it's great work that you're doing. And, you know, when we, one of the reasons, or this is sort of the exact reason why we wanted to have student board members was to hear the student voice and to have someone reach out and, and you're taking such an active role. It's, it's really great and in a difficult time. And so, I, I think it's wonderful what you're doing and reaching out and bringing back to us, you know, we, the means by which we can connect are limited in the best of times. And in these times, it's even more limited. So it's great to hear this from you.
It's great to hear the commitment to each and every student too, like we were talking about earlier. Ferndale has a lot of pride in sports or different programs, but not every kid is into those programs. So to find something for each and every kid, I think is fantastic. Good luck to you.
Thank you. So for the next one, uh, is my report on what I've been, I have been doing with Logan from WASTA. So next, I'll be summarize of my experience with the other school board student representative in our Zoom call to Lieutenant Governor Matt, um, a few weeks back. This was like a few days after our, my student speech with the other governors representative and the senator. So after Ms. Lee introduced me to Logan from WASTA, I was able to join with student, the student advocacy team. My goal, uh, I mean, I mean, my purpose on joining the Zoom call with the lieutenant was to advocate, to advocate for student health. Or, uh, I had like a whole two-page speech ready, like for my turn. But at the end, I didn't get to say anything because like most of what I wanted to say was already covered up by other students. And also our time with the lieutenant was really short. We only had like fifteen to twenty minutes with the governor, even though there were like six to like eight students with their own individual speech or purpose to up advocacy there. I don't know, I feel like in the future, if I would have to like go to these Zoom meeting or like to advocate, I would have to be like more, stand out or like be out there. Like just said, but I want to say before, you know, um, time's up. So for the last one, I guess I'm just going to be reading to you what my speech of, I did says for the, the Zoom meeting. So, this is my script. So, from the beginning, I says, so before I began rambling about my school life, I would like to say that I am not a great speaker. I usually can't say what I think when I'm under pressure, so I've written now what I'm saying in a text document. And I'm just going to be reading it to you. As a student representative, I feel like I should not only be representing my peers or our school students, but also our families and also communities. In general, what I can comment about my daily school life or what has it been? It has been stressful, emotional, and life-changing. Through this past year, it had taught, they had taught me that I should never take things for granted. Because if I did once thought that normal school was boring, this had taken it to another level. As a student representative of my school district, I can say that twenty twenty and until now has ruined mostly everyone's mental health, including staff, student, and families. Meta, or meta, metaphorically, every day is like a wheel to spin rapidly in a circle and repeatedly, typically under itself the next day. Even though we have Zoom or online classes that enable students to talk and learn with their peers and be engaged, there is no connection, communication, or support. I know that teachers are trying their hardest to help students, but I do not think that this is enough. Um, nowadays, I just come to class for the credits. It's, it is no longer for the learning. Every day, I just sit at my desk for like six to seven hour doing homework or staring off into a screen. Even though I know that knowledge is important. I also realized that using technology for a long period of time isn't healthy. I feel like I shouldn't say this on camera. However, recently my GPA has dropped, uh, so I'm no longer at my four point O. At first, I thought I didn't really care because I have tried my best under all these situations. However, that factor had made me even more depressed because it has made me feel like I haven't done enough. Personally, I do not, I do think that, um, I do, I don't think that school can function, functions the way they are right now. Because there aren't enough resources to help students get adapted to the learning environment that they are in. After our school district has finally reopened for student hybrid mode, where we have two days online and two days physical, um, school. I can say that for many student and teachers that the, this is, the decisions has changed lives, lots of lives. At least for what I can hear or see, there were a lot, there were lesser crying, stress and anger as there are more hopes that life can continue to be normal again, at least soon. Anyways, for my final, uh, for my personal note, when I think of school, I feel like there are always two factors. My school action decision and lifestyle are always completely different from what I am at home. I think that within school, there are also, there are always this pressure that you need to become someone that need to be stand out or blends in. This is an issue that I think is common within many schools and it, and it is impacting student. However, um, the fact is that now, since we have online learning, that two system has merged into one. I used to regret not spending much time with my family during normal school days. But now I don't think I even know my family anymore because all I am doing every day is locking myself in my room. But hybrid mode had made things a little bit easier as I am now able to look at my friends at a six feet distance. One thing that has been good within this past year or has helped me develop was the ability to be more flexible. This pandemic has made me become more responsible, organized, and flexible with my time. It has not only changed how I think and do things in my daily schedule, but also impact how I communicate and learn.
Well done, thank you. We heard lots of good reports about your speech from legislators and senators and, and such, so.
He was a huge hit. He was the star of our fifteen minutes.
Yeah, it was great because when, when we were speaking with our representatives, Representative Schumake, Representative Rule, and Senator Erickson, representing the forty-second legislative district where our school district is, WASTA, um, well, we wanted, we wanted to talk about socially emotional learning. We wanted to talk about graduation flexibility and we wanted to talk about the financing so that we can support our students in school. And having Kong give his story of what this past year has been like and what he needs in order, what he and other students need in order to build back those connections with their, their school environment and their community. It was perfect. It was a lot better than just a school board members thinking, saying what we think is important. And we could really take what he had said and say, this is why, this is why we're here, this is what is important to us, and please support us in the Ferndale School District. So thank you so much, Kong, for speaking for not only the students of the Ferndale School District, but the students of all of the forty-second legislative district. You were the only one that stepped up and you were awesome. I was very proud to be on the same team as you.
And I'm excited that you've taken advantage of meeting with Logan and, and pursuing that too.
Well, thank you, Kong. Anything else to add?
That's all I have for today.
Okay, well, thanks. Alright, elected board members, things to share? Well, in years past, I've always shared about how well the Tar Heels were doing in the NCAA finals. But, um, I have nothing to say on that this year.
How's Duke doing?
They're out too.
Oh, I don't even pay attention.
Yeah, we, we've been out. They, well, Duke, Duke was out before we were, I think. I can't remember exactly.
Does Dr. Erickson have anything to add on this subject?
No, he's muted. It's good.
I, I can't help but say the Zags are in the final four. I, I can't help but say the Zags are in the final four, so.
Well, give me a T-shirt.
We're going for a big record. We got two more games to win.
If you get me a T-shirt, I'll wear it, okay?
I'll let Daniel know.
Yeah, thank you. Dr. Quinn?
I'm good. Thank you.
And executive team? All right. So the final items on our agenda are the consent agendas. And the superintendent's consent agenda consists of items delegated to the superintendent for action but requiring the board's final approval. The board's consent agenda consists of routine items for the board to address. The board has had the opportunity to review all of the items prior to this meeting and is therefore able to expedite the work by taking action on the two consent agendas as a group rather than one at a time. So these same items are also available for public review on board docs. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve both consent agendas.
I would go ahead and move that we accept the superintendent's and board's consent agendas as presented and made part of the minutes.
All right, it's been moved to approve both the superintendent's consent agenda and the board's consent agenda as attached or to and made a part of the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, so we have reached the end of the agenda for the March 30th regular business meeting of the Ferndale School Board. Our next meeting is a study session scheduled for Tuesday, April 13. The main topic we intend to study will be the development of the 2122 budget. Our regular business meetings are always held the last Tuesday of the month so that the next one will occur on April 27th, following the groundbreaking for the new high school. So thank you all for your participation and I hereby declare this meeting adjourned.
Thank you.